Soon as the night tells me I can.
Yeah, it takes a minute. So John says, why can't you go sign?
I'm chatting over here on the radio. I should already be there.
Brush my daddy.
Send us your bit coming up.
Closing. We'll be on websites.
You pass up the door like.
Yep.
I don't give you the fire.
It's life for a lady from Russia.
Somebody's got blinds. Go ahead, man. Who's got blinds?
Are we ready, man?
No, no rooms who serve us so long. Are we ready? Okay, and Dave?
Would everyone please bow with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the opportunities it has to offer. Please be with us and guide our hearts and our minds as we come together today to make crucial decisions that may affect us all. May we always be here in support of one another as we continue to search for the most meaningful ways to serve you and our neighbors. Lord, we thank you for your presence here today as we pray in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill is out in the hall.
Right.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Elliot.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Meeks.
Here.
Majerik.
Here.
Walrath.
Here.
Yarborough.
Present.
Hinkleman.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Hugo.
Here.
Chickering.
Here.
Freely.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 yeses.
Thank you. We have a consent calendar.
Minutes.
Or I'm sorry, minutes from last week. We'll do those and then we'll work our way forward to the consent calendar. Any changes to the minutes the clerk set out last Friday? Hearing now is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Scott. I believe the minutes is ready.
Support for approving the minutes of July 9?
Commissioner Meeks support.
By Scott, supported by Meeks. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yarborough.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hinkleman. Hinkleman?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Chickering.
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Freely.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Hugo.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 yeses.
Thank you. Do we have any communications?
We have none.
No communications. We'll pause for a moment for public comment regarding consent calendar resolutions.
There are none.
We have no comments about the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Not like a motion.
Moved by Volrand. Is there support?
All support.
Supported by Hugo. Any discussion? Hearing member of the court, please call the roll.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hinkleman.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Chickering.
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Freely.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Hugo.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 yeses.
Thank you. Commissioner reports is the next item on the list. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share with the group?
Chair, Commissioner Scott, I'd like to give you an update. Day before yesterday, the state of Michigan road department, MDOT, came out and changed the three and a half miles of US 12 from the state line to the city limits in New Buffalo. They changed it from the restriping of a three lane back to a four lane. And they are not going to do the traffic study. The state basically, there was a debacle on how they had that going together. They were, they were suggested by myself and the mayor of the city of New Buffalo, Lou O'Donnell, to restripe that section and do a study. The problem is, is that they weren't even planning on starting the study until the end of July. And it was suggested that they do it from Memorial Day to Labor Day. So it was just a debacle on how they got the cones out and the striping and, and the signage and everything. So there were a lot of complaints and they came and took it out. So that section is not on a road diet anymore.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Chairman, this is Michael Majerik. I went to the Bering County Riverwood Mental Health Authority meeting last night. And because of the CARES Act, they had budgeted to be almost a million in the hole. And they are over a million up right now. And of course, that's going to go away by the time this is over. But right now, things are looking okay for the mental health with everybody staying home. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Mamie, did you have something?
Well, will you tell about the meeting we had yesterday?
Brian's going to get that in the next segment.
Okay, good. I'll leave that alone then. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is.
Yes, Terry.
I just want to let board members know that if they didn't have a chance to fill out the worksheets for the Planning Commission, the Bering County Planning Commission in preparation of the master plan, that you can still do so. We're only in the beginning stage. And when I shared that information with the Planning Commission that you guys were reviewing those worksheets, they were very pleased and looking forward to all of our responses.
Thank you.
How do I find it? Terry, you, it's under your name. How do I find it?
So I, it would be under my name in your email, but Mamie, I will send it to you again.
Send it to my personal, the one I know how to work. You know the Comcast address.
Certainly.
Mr. Freely, I want to let you know it is on my to-do list today. So.
Okay.
You can receive me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have anything? If not, we'll move to the administrator's report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Nikki Britton provided an update to the EOC group yesterday. She is on vacation this week, so I'm going to just read the summary of what I've been supplied by the Health Department. She writes that when monitoring COVID-19 transmission and disease patterns in Bering County, the Health Department looks for four metrics. One is new number of positive cases, two, hospitalization, three, deaths, and then 4% of COVID tests that are positive. The health system capacity to care for ill people and special considerations for vulnerable populations are also closely monitored. She goes on to provide a few bullet points. She notes that the number of new cases in Bering County is increasing. The two-week rolling average for new daily cases rose steadily from four on July 1st to nine on July 14th. Increases in transmission are expected as people continue to engage in social and economic activities. Point number two, hospitalizations have increased slightly over the last two weeks. Increases in hospitalization trends tend to lag one to two weeks behind increases in cases due to the nature of the disease's progression. The healthcare system has enough capacity to meet current demand. The third point is there has been one death since mid-June. Fourth point is the percentage of COVID-19 yielding positive results has increased slightly, but remains under 4%. And then the last point is there has been a new nursing home with cases in the last seven to 10 days. The Health Department is continuing to work with staff at that facility to educate on appropriate infection control practices and to provide guidance on testing. Now, as a reminder to the board, the state of emergency has ended, but the COVID continuing committee is meeting on a weekly basis in a semi-EOC role to meet with the Health Department and get weekly updates. Between myself and the chair, we'll make sure that a summary of that data is being shared with this board. Mr. Chairman, is there anything else?
On that note, Rocky Adams will be back from vacation next week. And I would anticipate that he'll assist in coordinating those, those weekly meetings. As you probably know, the governor has again extended the state of emergency for the state of Michigan now until the 11th of August. And Nikki mentioned yesterday that she had been in touch with the prosecutor's office about what to do when people called to complain about violations of the governor's executive orders. And that was just at the tail end of our discussion, so I'm not really sure what all that entails. But I think it involves the prosecutor's office passing things on to the local law enforcement. And presumably, they will be reminding people to, you know, whatever, you know, restaurant shops and whatnot, to have their customers mask up when they come in. I think with restaurants, you wear one just till you get to your table. It's kind of hard to eat with the mask on. So. But that was the only other thing I could think of.
Mr. Chair, do you have one more update to the board? To the board, the CARES Act was discussed by Commissioner Majerik. Just as a follow-up on the CARES Act, the folks upstairs have been working hard to meet some pretty tight timelines. Last week, staff sat through an update from the state of Michigan and the Michigan Municipal League describing the terms of the CARES Act. And the good news is that there are funds available to help offset costs tied to the COVID-19 response. The bad news is, and this was straight from this webinar, it was essentially a first come, first served. So staff stayed, stayed late and got the first application submitted on Friday afternoon. We are now working on the second application for tomorrow afternoon. So our applications will be in in a very timely manner. We have sought two separate pots of money. The first is the first responder hazard pay premium program. And this is up to $1,000 for every person in law enforcement that has been working through the COVID-19 response. So we have applied for Bering County law enforcement officers. That includes 911 operators, corrections officers, and the good people working under the Sheriff's Department. That went in on Friday afternoon totaling $160,000 in requested funds. And then tomorrow afternoon, we'll have a payroll reimbursement request submitted to the state that if awarded, could be about $200,000 coming back to the county. So we'll see. I have no way to determine if, what the state of Michigan will be doing. But your team here worked hard to get these applications turned around in a very quick manner. Mr. Chair?
I'll defer to the chair of personnel. Thanks, Brian. I am interested in why that first grant applies only to first responders in law enforcement. We've got dozens and dozens of equally important first responders in other places, Health Department in particular.
Yep.
So what's the story there for you to the extent you know?
Well, it, it's, it's a question truly to the Michigan Legislature. We, we inquired through Department of Treasury to ask specifically about the Health Department. And the response that we got was the legislation is clear that it does not apply to Health Department workers. And this is one that I do personally feel bad that some are excluded from, from the premium pay. But this is one that the Michigan Legislature was very clear that this thing was written specifically for law enforcement. I would happily reach out to the Michigan Legislature to ask if they're considering additional amendments that they consider Health Department.
And I think for our fellow commissioners, anybody you can contact, I mean, that's a gross injustice, in my opinion. And I think we need to remind our local legislators that there's a lot more here involved than just the security services. So thank you, Brian. That'd be a good thing to do.
Go read that where they did, just included the Health Department.
It's just included. It was considered and then they tossed them out.
Yeah.
Nice people.
Well, they weren't, they just weren't including them.
This is Michael Majerik. The governor did give $2 raise to all direct care workers in the health field until this is over for the COVID-19 responses. I did learn that last night also. And I don't know how long the $2 increase is going to last.
Well, Michael, I assume that's only her people, not all people.
It just says given to, for COVID-related purposes, direct care workers in the health field. That's all it says.
I know through the AAA, Area Agency on Aging, that those folks did get a raise going back to, like, I believe March and April when it started, that they, they are getting more money because of the COVID-19. Those care workers that work with them and for them.
Mike, you kind of hit where I was going to go on, on with that. But can we do a resolution as this board to suggest that there should be fairness to all?
We can look into that.
Well, that was kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Chiggin was saying.
PHS.
Give us our support and mean a suggestion to the state to correct this.
PHS committee will take care of that. Okay.
Can I read this further?
Yes, sir.
It says, COVID-related purposes, a $2 hour wage increase for direct care workers, first responders hazard pay, inpatient behavioral health grants, personal protection equipment grants, water utility assistance, rental assistance, small business grants, and support for the Unemployment Insurance Agency, among others. That's, that's what the, the article says.
Doesn't sound like it covers county health departments.
Didn't mention it in there.
Yeah. Brian?
So just to this group, the Personnel Committee is scheduled to meet next Wednesday, the 22nd, at 10:30 a.m. I'll make sure that this is a discussion topic on the agenda for next week's meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, Mamie, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mamie Yarborough, I want to ask Administrator Desseaux, can you tell us what we are doing in county? Is the administration building open? Is the courthouse open? Can you just walk in? You know, restate what we are doing.
Sure. So this building is open for business. We, members of the public are allowed to come in and access the building. They do have to go through pre-basic health screening. They do also have to have a mask on for, for any type of walk-up service. The courts are conducting business, however, it is still virtual. Last week, I sent out an update to this board just reminding that the courts are following the lead of the Supreme Court. And they anticipate that essentially a reopening for walk-up service could be coming later this month. But again, that is tied on a weekly basis of observation of what's occurring in Lansing. I will be meeting with the court staff Friday at 3 o'clock. I'll inquire at that time if there's any updates on when we anticipate those doors opening up for the public.
And the senior centers, maybe that's not anything, you know, all those things are open? Area agents? I mean, we don't know?
I apologize, ma'am. I don't know that one off the top of my head.
When I said it, I thought that's not necessarily us to know. Okay. All right. Thank you. I just want to be more clear on, you know, our basic buildings. Where can you go? Thank you.
If there's nothing else to report, we have general public comments now. So we'll wait and see if there's anything out there.
While we're waiting for public comments, the Commissioner Freely.
Yes.
I was neglectful in reporting along with Commissioner Kern and Commissioner Harrison and our county administrator. The BCAT team regarding Bering Bus did meet to discuss and just get a brief update from Evan and Dan Fettie on how things are going in the transition. Obviously, we're only just, just a little over two weeks into doing the operations of Bering Bus. But Evan is working through all of the logistics of that, trying to see what the needs are for the community. But Bering Bus is operating. And one of the things I know that Evan is looking into is dispatching, improving that, looking for efficiencies in that way. But there was a very good discussion on things that are going on. And we do hope to have a plan to bring before this full board in the very near future. I'm not sure if Commissioner Kern or Commissioner Harrison has more to add to the discussion.
Bob or Jim?
I think, I think you covered it well. Thank you for filling in the gaps for Commissioner Kern and myself.
No, very, very nice job, Commissioner Freely. And I have nothing to add.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's find out if anyone out in cyber world has any comments.
Tony Benhart from Sodas Township. And his comment is happy to see the change on Red Arrow and that nature needs to stay as it is now, as it has more traffic on Red Arrow. I'm still waiting to see if this other comment needs to be included. One second. Okay. I don't believe you have any more public comments.
All right. Thank you. Announcements, reminders, it's already been mentioned, PHS is meeting on Wednesday at 10:30. Finance meets Thursday next at 9:30. We meet Thursday next at 10:30. As of now, we are not scheduled to meet two weeks from today, on the 30th, being the fifth Thursday of the month. Our calendar of meetings right now has us doing a night meeting on the 6th of August. By next week, I think we'll need to make a decision about whether we're going to try to do that or whether we're going to continue meeting virtually. With the extension of the latest executive order, I guess we'll find out if we can meet virtually in August. I think as of right now, that particular order says through the 31st of July, public bodies can meet virtually. So we'll just keep an eye on it. Does anyone else have anything?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Yarborough, go back to Thursday, the 23rd. And our administrator let me know if this is still self, that we will have a pension meeting at 12 o'clock. And that we have a land bank meeting at 2 o'clock. There are four meetings next Thursday.
Okay.
I, I got that. We named all that. The pension is with MJ from Chicago. And the land bank with the treasurer. So.
So pension and land bank next Thursday as well?
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
And if it's not, just let us know.
We'll have to confirm or verify that those are on next week and let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Annette, did you have something?
I do have one more. Adolf Pelser from Hager Township. I can hear everybody loud and clear. Remember to speak clearly into the mic when we get back to normal. I can control the volume at home, but not from either.
Hello.
All right. You got it, Adolf. Way to go, Adolf.
You got your pants on?
Yay.
Mac?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Scott here. Today, we have a broadband, broadband brain trust meeting, day of 3 p.m.
Okay. All right. We're, we're meeting at 1 o'clock to, to talk about the salary survey.
Next week.
Or next, next week, I'm sorry. 23rd. I'm a week ahead of myself. Bill, Brian and I, and Gillian from the Health Department, Kerry from the courts, Shelley. Sharon. Sharon.
I'm, I'm here dying of a healthy.
And then the consultant is coming in from somewhere. I'm not sure where.
It's Mark Knottley.
He's got a little bit of windshield time to get here. That's why we're doing it 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay. On the 23rd?
Yes. Can you mute me for a minute?
Commissioner Scott? Yes. Don't forget, we have a broadband meeting today at 2:15. Oh, it's at 2:15? I thought it was 3. Nope, 2:15. Well, I will change that on my schedule. Since you missed the last one. Well, you know, it was just one of them things, chicken wing. I hear you. Hope to see you. Oh, I'll be there.
Where is the, where is the broadband meeting?
Um.
Anybody else?
It's Southwest Michigan Planning Commission. It's via Zoom. So, and I misstated. Commissioner Kern straightened me out. It is not at 3 p.m. today. It is at 2:15 p.m. today.
Do they still meet over at Southwestern Michigan College or where do they meet?
No, that's. No, that's Southwest Michigan Planning Commission, right downtown, by Conexus. Yep.
Across the street.
Yep.
Shows how long it's been since I went to one of their meetings. Okay, anyone have anything else? If not, we'll adjourn to next Thursday at 10:30 for the board meeting, and we'll mark this 11:05 a.m. for our conclusion this morning. Thank you.
Thank you all.